Okay, I'll call this meeting in order with the Bennington Select Board Monday, March 24th, 2014, at the Bennington Fire Facility. Time now is 6:00 PM. Now, we have members of the Vietnam Veterans America 601 here. Can I ask them to come forward and lead us in the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, in the fifth of the book of the Constitution.
John, if you could stay there. I'm gonna go off the agenda a little bit. We have a proclamation to read also for the Vietnam veterans. I'm gonna read it now while you guys are up there on camera. I know you're all camera shy, so don't worry about it. "The town of Bennington proclamation, Vietnam veterans welcome home day in Vermont. Whereas, the years of the Vietnam War were especially difficult for hundreds of thousands of Americans who fought in this conflict, and whereas, American soldiers were engaged in consistent combat under extremely trying conditions, and when they returned home faced a problematic transition, and whereas, according to the National Archives, over 58,000 American military personnel serving in Vietnam died or are presumed dead as a result of combat illness or other war-related circumstances, and whereas, the same National Archives data computations indicates that more than 7,236 Vermonters who served in Vietnam, 100 perished or are presumed to have died while serving, and whereas, it is especially important to remember those American military personnel from both Vermont and across the United States who made the ultimate sacrifice when called to serve their nation in Vietnam War. Whereas, March 29th, 2014 marks the 41st anniversary of the day that the last American combat troops were withdrawn from Vietnam, and it is fitting occasion to pay tribute to all the Vermonters who served in the Vietnam War. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that we, members of the Bennington Select Board, salute the Vermonters who served in Vietnam War, honors the memory of those who died in this conflict, and designates March 29th, 2014 as Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home Day in Vermont and in Bennington as well, dated this 24th day of March 2014." Signed by the Select Board. Thank you, guys, for serving. I will now go on to my agenda next to the minutes from March 10th. Any questions, any considerations on the minutes from March 10th?
I'll move it being accepted as printed.
Okay.
Second.
In a second. Any corrections? Okay, if not, motion there. We're going to warrants.
Do we have to make a motion to make that block proclamation?
Yeah.
I would move it unanimously.
Okay, let's go back to proclamation. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
I move it accepted.
Do you have a second? All in favor? And that's unanimous.
Make it official.
Okay, Tom, we'll start with you on the warrants.
I have nothing that hasn't been answered. Thank you.
Okay, Greg?
I'm all set.
John?
All set.
No questions on the warrants?
Okay, the warrants go by. Okay, next item, citizens' law. Might come up.
My name is Loyal Weskow. I live in Bennington, and I'm gonna ask you guys again, because the police have responded to two apartments four times from the same landlords that own them. Last Sunday night, at 326 Pleasant Street, cops were called saying there was a fight. They left 45 minutes later. A female took her car and hit a male, putting a gash on his forehead. Are we gonna wait until we have bodies before we pass that mandatory criminal background check for landlords and fine them $10,000 when they don't evict them?
Well, I think most of us read your letter and the banner last week, and said the same thing and heard you before. I think, does anybody have a different answer than we've given Loyal before? Our police are aware of the activities we have on certain streets in our community. They've increased their presence on there. As you've just stated, they reacted to incidents as they should when they occur there or reported there. Right now, the feeling of the board is not to pass a law along the terms of, I think you used New York City as an example.
Yes.
I don't think that the board agrees that that's appropriate for this town.
We have gangs here just like New York City, and we got different types of criminals now.
Right. Understand, Loyal.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John, did you want to speak to the BBC?
Nope, it's actually not to do with the BBC, but thanks. I just wanna take one second to read a letter that I received, and it's to accomplish the goal of sending out some kudos to Dave Newell, Andy Newell, and Dion Snowshoes. And it's a letter I received from Mark Elmore, who is the sports director for the United States Snowshoe Association. I think you might have all received a copy also, but it said, "My name is Mark Elmore. I serve as a sports director for the United States Snowshoe Association, Inc. In this capacity, I recently had the pleasure of coordinating and hosting the 14th Annual United States National Snowshoe Championship there in Bennington, nearby Prospect Mountain. Bennington's David Newell of Will's Insurance served as our local race director. He was capably assisted by Tim Van Orden, technical chair, Bob and Denise Dion of Dion Snowshoes of North Bennington, who were their title sponsors, and an amazing team of awesome staff and volunteers, including the wonderful group at Prospect Mountain. David and his event staff submitted a bid proposal to the USSSA on January 1st, 2013, and they were officially awarded to bid to host the 2014 championships in March of this year. In the year since, they've been incredibly dedicated and focused on presenting the best championship event ever. By all accounts, they succeeded, and I wanted to be sure to share this with a few of the Bennington officials. You're truly blessed to have such outstanding citizens in your community, willing to devote themselves so unselfishly to promoting their community and all it has to offer to visitors from all over the U.S. and the world." And then he added a few facts that he thought that were important and we should know. This championship was the largest in the USSSA history. Nearly 400 athletes from 22 different states, Canada, Puerto Rico, Australia, Brazil, Mexico, Spain, Great Britain, Sweden, the United States Army, and the United States Coast Guard all participated. This championship presented the largest field ever, and additionally, 18 international athletes from eight different countries competed, far more than ever before. By all accounts, Friday evening's athlete reception at the beautiful Bennington Center for the Arts, to the events championship banquet at Mount Anthony Middle School, were the best organized, most smoothly presented championship in the history, and so on. But I just wanted to make sure we sent out kudos to that group that did this.
Yeah, John, you wanna make sure Stuart gets a copy of that?
The copy in the mail today.
Okay, good.
I would move that we recognize the effort and volunteers of this community in taking up the...
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you, John. John Minor, you wanna come up and talk about this?
Hi, my name is John Minor, Vietnam Vet. On Saturday, March 29th, we're gonna have a Welcome Home Day at the Vermont Veterans' Home. We're going to be also celebrating the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War on the same day, and we have placed 55 commemorative flags will be going up that day for 30 days. I have been working with DOD and the Commemorative Group out of Washington to get the flags, and we have them for 30 days, and they'll be up. We've also joined forces with a group called Your Never Alone Foundation. That group is going to all the schools, and we hope to have schoolchildren there. Plus, we will have an event in the multipurpose room from 1:30 to 3:30 with this "You Matter, I Matter," trying to teach everybody that they all matter. So I think it's gonna be a fantastic day. I also would like to mention that Norwich University has stepped forward, and on March 30th, they will have a big event there from 3:00 to 6:00 in the Armory, and I will be master of ceremonies of that one in Norwich. Also, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans' Day, so anybody who wants to go to Norwich should go up. They're gonna have 15 or 20 different service organizations with booths at 3:00 to 4:00, and then 4:00, they'll have the ceremony with a lot of guest speakers, and it'll last till 6:00. So, again, on behalf of Vietnam vets, we want to thank not only this, but I should also mention that Representative Strong, who is a Gold Star Mother, passed the resolution up in Mount Pelear, and that resolution will be read on the House floor at 9:30 on Friday morning, and we hope to have a lot of vets there for that. And she'll be coming down here on Saturday to read it again during our ceremony, so it's very important.
John, your flyer doesn't say the time. What time is it gonna begin?
It starts at 12:00 sharp at the vet's home. It'll probably last about an hour, hour and a half, and then we'll go over and do the "I Matter, You Matter" in the multipurpose room.
Okay, good. That's the Christmas multipurpose at the veterans' home?
Yeah, and if it wasn't for the vets' home, we couldn't do any of this. So, again, thank you and the community.
Thank you, John. Any other citizens? We have five minutes before we have to conduct a public hearing on the Vermont Community Development Block Grant application, so is there any other citizens? Joanne?
Joanne Erin House from the Chamber of Commerce here in Bennington. First of all, I want to thank the gentlemen here who have presented us all with this wonderful opportunity to welcome home forever all of our Vietnam veterans. It's a wonderful day, and I'm really proud of all of them. The other thing I would like to also say is, John, if you have an extra banner, I would gladly hang it up at the Welcome Center before and during the March 29th event. Other than that, I just want to thank everybody, and I want to say, Joe, we're gonna miss you from the Select Board here, so that's it.
I'm not moving anywhere.
Okay, thank you very much.
Not until 2017, anyway.
I'm not gonna bring forth any chamber things at this point. I'll save them for two weeks out.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, so let's go into the police radio console, see if we can finish that in five minutes. Stuart?
Actually, the chief was. He's on his way, actually, but we can start. Basically, we talked about this during the budget process, the fact that we have a need for new radio console at the police department. Originally, we were talking about a grant of around $65,000, with the town making up the remainder, $50-some-odd thousand out of its capital facilities reserve. As is his habit, Paul has continued to pursue additional funding through the state of Vermont, emergency management, and Homeland Security, and has succeeded in securing an additional... I can't do the math in my head right now, but essentially reducing the town's share of the project to $36,316. And obviously, this is a need that we have identified. It was one that we knew we would be securing grant funds to assist us. We do have $127,414 in the capital facility reserve as of the end of January. That grows by approximately $26 to $2700 a month. The rent from the radio antenna that Verizon uses behind the blacksmith shop goes into this fund, so this is a constant growing fund, and I would encourage the board to pursue this opportunity. The grant funds do expire on June 15th, so we must complete the project in that timeframe, which is why we're here tonight.
So we need to present matching funds of $36,000 plus?
$36,316. I'm gonna throw in the 20 cents myself.
And we're gonna take that, your suggestion and Paul's suggestion, to take it out of the capital facilities reserve?
That's what it's there for, and I think it's an excellent project.
Okay.
This is the narrow banding.
No, this is the entire console. The consoles, the dispatchers, it's a dual console that the dispatchers work out of at the PD. Go back to the original construction of the police department, and they have begun to break down. We've begun to have some problems, and our fear is that we'll lose entire radio and console phone contact. So this is a must-do.
How old is it, Stuart, the current system?
The chief just walked in. How old is our system currently?
Just over 14 years.
When we built firearms, when we did the police station.
That is correct.
For the purpose of the discussion, I would move the acceptance of the grant.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? We've talked about this during a couple of years.
Paul, you feel pretty... Yeah, it's about $20,000 less than what we were originally anticipating.
It's about $23,000 less, yes.
Are you pretty comfortable with the grant being approved?
I am, I was on the phone today with Homeland Security. Our grant total will be $138,630. Of that amount, $106,314 will be used for the consoles. $32,316 will be used for new portable radios.
Okay, any other discussion? Do we have a motion, a second?
We have a second. As I recall, this was to keep us up to required standards. This is something we've been upgrading little at a time for years, and now we have to upgrade the whole thing to get where we need to be, correct?
When we had our budget sessions back in January, we talked about some of our components not functioning and having to go on eBay and buy parts. So this will bring us up to where we need to be, and we won't have to worry about this for hopefully another 12 years. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry to steal your thunder, Paul, but time moves on.
Back to work.
It's a good thing we practiced.
Yeah. Thank you.
Go back to work, Paul. Okay, John Broderick, you wanna come up and sit and stand in about 30 seconds so we can start our public meeting here? Public hearing.
Thanks for calling, we'll hear what's up with you.
Now we're saving.
Okay, this is a public hearing on the Vermont Community Development Block Grant Application for the Shire's Housing. This is for Apple Ridge 24 units, right, John?
That's right.
Why don't you explain to the people of Bennington what this project is?
Thank you, Joe. Thanks, members of the board, for having me here tonight. My name is John Broderick. I'm Executive Director of Shire's Housing, formerly known as RAC, Regional Affordable Housing Corporation. We've been in the community for more than 20 years, developed a number of successful affordable housing developments. I've been a resident of Bennington now for nine years and have been in the affordable housing business for about 25. You have my letter in front of you, but for the audience and for folks at home, I will explain what we're requesting. We are planning to build 24 units of newly constructed affordable workforce housing in Bennington at the site of what is now known as the Apple Ridge Condominiums. They're on South Street and sort of between South Street and Silver Street. The reason for my request is because one of the funding sources that we traditionally use for our developments is the Community Development Block Grant Program, which here in Vermont goes through the Vermont Community Development Program, and the applicants must be municipalities. So we're very grateful that the town has worked with us in the past in this fashion, and we respectfully request that you do so again.
So we're just a pass-through agency on this, is all we are? We could hold the money, and you're the one that spends it once it's been approved?
That's right.
And then we have to close out the grant after you complete your project?
That's right. There's an online system where we fill out the application, and then Michael Harrington and Stuart review and submit the application to the Vermont Community Development Program. So the Community Development Block Grant Program was created in the middle of 1970s to fund municipalities and to give municipalities discretion about how those funds would be used. So the allocation of federal funds that Vermont gets is then allocated to municipalities and organizations through a competitive process. So the amount that is already in CDBG funds that already come to Vermont are already programmed for this type of project, and again, it's nothing from the town's tax rolls here. It's all federal money administered through the states.
John, often questions come up about, this is not low-income housing. Can you explain the housing situation? Who can apply to go into these 24 units?
The income range is necessary to rent one of these apartments will be between about $26,000 and $36,000. What it is, it's income limited in that people can't earn over about 60% of the median income for most of the 24 apartments that we'll have. But in addition, they also have to earn enough to be able to pay the rent without going over about 35% of their income for rent. We don't have Section 8 for this development. Section 8 is a rental subsidy program in our country that is sometimes assigned to projects where every apartment in the development has a Section 8 subsidy, and we don't have that for any of our developments. We have it for one small seven-unit development, but that's all. So for anything new that we've done, it really does target that workforce group who earn more than about $25,000, $26,000, but still less than about $36,000. And the reason I'm saying about is because it's adjusted for family size.
How is it subsidized?
How is it subsidized? Because the funds for the construction, we apply for government agencies. The primary funding source is the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which we apply for tax credits through Vermont Housing Finance Agency, and then we sell those to an investor who then funds the construction of the development. Once we get the keys, we're on our own, and we really have a responsibility to make sure that the units remain in compliance, that the tenants who live there continually meet those income guidelines, that they meet all sorts of other rules and restrictions. But we're responsible to our investors to make sure that we're collecting rents and that we run the operation like a business. We're a nonprofit organization, but we're very much like a small business. We pay a great deal in property taxes for every one of our properties in Bennington. I think the total was around $160,000 that we paid last year.
So this will be added to the tax rolls?
It will be added to the tax rolls. I didn't calculate how much more would be added to the grand list from going from a primarily vacant site to a fully developed site, but it's a significant difference.
So is there any ongoing funding source aside from the user-generated revenue to help support this in the end, once the original money comes through?
Once we get grant funds, we have a closing. The next day, we start construction, and we draw the money down, and when you see me for a closeout report, again, we're on our own. It's rental income, and that's it. There are no ongoing subsidies for a development like this.
But you're not paying back the grant? It's a grant?
You know...
You're not making a...
It's a grant, it's a grant because we don't expect this development to ever, all of a sudden, start to cash flow so much that it could be repaid back. It is structured as a loan because that's to secure it and make sure that it's used for the right purpose, so that some other guy doesn't take my seat in some years and say, "We're gonna sell this thing." You can't do that, and so it's structured as a loan for that purpose.
Does it benefit the investor for the tax credits that come?
The Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program was signed into law by President Reagan in 1986, so it benefits various constituencies. In one case, constituency is the investor, so the investor makes a reasonable return on their investment.
When we see the $26,000, that's the low end of what the minimum is for the person trying to rent an apartment. Now, is that the single person, or is that the family that's moving in, or the couple that might move in, boyfriend, girlfriend, whatever the scenario?
I think that's for a two-person household.
So that two-person household has to have a collective income of $26,000?
Right.
So that's roughly $12 an hour if you break it down, between the two of them, which is $6.25 between the two of them?
Well, actually, I have a chart that describes about how much you need to earn and about how many hours a week you need to make to afford a rent. Let's say a rent of 728. We might have some two-bedrooms, definitely one-bedrooms.
Well, let's talk about the minimum, because we're talking about non-low-income housing, right?
Right.
So the minimum is $26,000 a year?
Approximately, yeah.
Between two people?
Right.
Which breaks down to about $6.25 an hour if they're working 40 hours a week.
Okay, I don't have that math in front of me, but if that's what, if you have a calculator and you're doing that math, then...
Sure.
Okay. But for someone making $13 an hour, working 40 hours a week, then they would be able to afford, in our calculation, a rent of about $728. So for 40 hours a week at $15 an hour, that family could afford a rent of 840.
Right, but I'm looking at the worst-case scenario here, where we're saying it's not low-income, but then at the same time, it's considerably low-income.
Well, I think, John, you would have to look at the two-person unit as, since the minimum wage is higher than that in Vermont, if both income earners were minimum wage, they'd be close to $19 an hour. That gets you in, that means you pay more in rent than the minimum.
Right, I guess what my question is, what defines low-income housing if not this type of scenario?
Well, what defines low-income housing is, you know, I don't even call it low-income housing. I say affordable to people earning a certain amount. So what this program targets is people who earn less than 60% of the median. The median income is roughly $62,000, so for people who earn between $26,000 and $36,000, they should be able to afford an apartment without going over 35% of their income for rent. If someone came in and they were earning $20,000 and we had a vacancy, and it would require them paying 50% of their income for rent, we would have to turn them down. We wouldn't accept them, and we unfortunately have to deny people all the time. We do very stringent credit checks, criminal background checks, and prior landlord references. I think people can attest to the kinds of managers that we are. We're very attentive. Someone here spoke tonight about a landlord that wasn't responsive. We're very responsive. We watch for overcrowding situations. We actually employ someone who's a retired police officer who goes around in the middle of the night to check license plates at the cars, to make sure that we can follow up and document reports about unauthorized occupants. So I think in addition to building for that target income group that I think people support in this town, I think we're also good on the ground after the development is built and making sure that it's a positive thing for town.
This was a site that was gonna previously be developed by another developer, is that correct?
That's right.
And for whatever reason, did not happen. And last I heard, we still have a need for rental properties in the town of Bennington, Bennington area, considerable rental properties, and you're talking about building 24 new rental properties?
That's right.
And probably adding another $150,000 of tax rolls, roughly, based on what I saw you doing.
Hopefully a little less than that.
We don't.
What data shows that we need more rental property? I'm just curious, because I haven't seen it myself.
I think you'll find all the statistics in the housing area here. Maybe Michael or Dan can help us out out there, but we are short housing, and that's... I know the young professionals say they are young, and that's not really young professional housing, but they say there's a big shortage of housing for them here.
Well, I also know there's about 30 multifamily homes on the market right now, and for some reason, they aren't able to sell their multifamily homes. And what I'm wondering is if this artificially allows a developer to have 24 units that have lower rents than they would if someone else came out and tried to buy a property. So by artificially lowering that rent, we could potentially lower the rent of all rental properties. I know you're saying there's a need, but it could potentially lower that rent, thus making it even harder for that landlord to then sell these 29, 30 buildings that are on the market currently today.
How long did it take you to fill North Branch Street?
Three months.
Three months.
That's all well and good, but they're also, they're also at, what, 70% the value of a normal rent?
There were 12 on Benmont Avenue and 14 on North Branch Street.
But the people that are renting these probably don't make enough income to qualify to buy, to purchase a house.
Well, I could rent here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I would take the spot of someone else that might rent elsewhere. What I'm saying is that at, let's say it's a two-bedroom apartment. I know we had a chart when Mullins Associates came in here, and I think the two-bedroom apartment in Bennington went for about $850, $900. I think that's what it was. I don't know what it was for utilities. So if at $850, $900, there's an apartment for $650, well, yeah, I can rent that out in a month, in two months. I can get people to leave, to go with their 30-to-60-day lease agreement where they have to leave their lease and go somewhere where it's $300 cheaper a month. That's not an issue. I could do that in a heartbeat. What I'm afraid of is that we're artificially lowering this by getting a grant to a developer when we already have 30 properties on the market that can't be sold, because apparently it's not a good business decision for those 30 landlords.
But why are you comparing houses for sale with houses for rent?
These are multifamily houses. These are people that are trying to rent down, for whatever reason, aren't successful or don't see the reason to hold that investment, when usually that would be a good investment, or has been said historically that it is a good investment.
Okay, well, I don't think we're being asked to that. We're asking to support the program that...
Right, but what I'm asking is that we look at the side effects to that, and although it does seem like a good thing, it does offer up lower affordable housing to people, it also artificially lowers the potential rent for the people that are out there currently.
Could I just ask a question relative to, this is a 35% household income maximum or a payment out of your discretionary income, as it were? So how does, that's probably one of the yardsticks that you have to use?
That we make sure that people have enough income to pay the rent without paying more than 35% of their income.
I mean, that may be in part a problem, that people are paying more than 35%. Maybe they're paying 50 or 60. It also impacts their ability for decent housing.
I've heard from a number of, you know, private property owners in Bennington that are concerned, multi-unit property owners that are concerned about how this is gonna have an effect on their property values and the fact that they're having rental properties available that they can't rent currently. It does concern me that we are potentially creating... Um, it, it does concern me that we are potentially creating an artificial market that hurts property values and resale values for homes that are currently on the market, multi-unit homes. Um, yeah, I'd like to know what the occupancy rate is of rental properties in Bennington. I don't know if anybody has an, an answer to that, but it seems from, you know, from what I'm hearing here, it's different from what I hear from, from people who are, you know, in the business of, of rental properties. I, I don't know if you can speak to that at all.
I can't speak to the, I can't speak to the occupancy rate of other multifamily housing that's privately owned that we don't own, but I can just say anecdotally what people find when they, when they go out there and look and try and rent an apartment is that it's high-rent, low-quality, and I think what we've already heard tonight from, from, you know, a, a citizen is that some of those multifamily rentals that you might be using for comparison here have become a blight on, on the, the town because the landlords are not responsible for one way or another. I think you might find overcrowding, I think you might find unauthorized occupants, I mean, I think you might find unsafe standards there. Um, the first time my organization has ever done new construction in Bennington was on North Branch Street. This will be the, only the second time. So out of more than a hundred-and-fifty apartments here, it's all been rehab of abandoned buildings, buildings that were so underwater that the private sector really wouldn't go in and make the proper investment, um, including an old school building which had been vacant for a long time, um, a lot of buildings on Benmont Avenue which other folks wouldn't touch. So we are moving into now into, into bringing on, um, new units on, you know, into the mix, um, that will change the dynamic, but, you know, we've been in a slump. Hopefully our town is turning around and people are moving here and people are coming here to, uh, you know, to work and, and if, if our economic development efforts are successful, um, we'll, we'll need an increase in housing in the coming years. And we're not building for today, we're building for the future, and I think the town has a future here.
Okay, we're not asked to approve this tonight. Uh, this is just a public hearing, so we can do one or two things. We can table this and get answers to John's question is he wants to see in writing why southern Vermont, especially Bennington County, has a shortage of rental properties. Justin, you want to, you got some questions you want answered?
Yeah, I, I do.
What are they?
I'd like to know what the occupancy rate is for, for, uh, if somebody could get that for us, I'm sure we can come up with that, uh, what the, you know, how many available properties we have for rental right now through, through the private sector and, and what the, what the occupancy rate of that is and, I mean, I mean, just some of the things that I have heard from landlords and I have spoke to a few people is that they're concerned that nonprofit rental housing is driving down their market so much that they are having trouble filling these places and they are running into some blight issues because they don't have the tenants in there to support their costs.
Okay, any other board members have any other information you want before you take action? Greg?
Um, one question is, um, uh, it appears to me that the, the goal of this kind of housing is to get people in, uh, into a place that are having trouble affording a rent and then give them a place to live as they grow into their career or, or coming out of poverty or growing into an independent living situation or something like that. Is there a point where someone stops qualifying to live in this, uh, in this neighborhood or are you there for the duration no matter how well you do?
No, your income can increase once you're in. Um, we have to then juggle some around, it's complicated, I don't wanna explain all the rules, but people are not, you know, they're, they're not made to move if they get raises beyond the original, uh, beyond the income.
So they, they can live in an unsub, unsubsidized situation, but stay in their apartment?
That's right.
Okay, any other board members?
What kind of a timeframe are you looking at here, John?
Uh, we need approval quickly in order to meet our, our deadline for the next funding round.
Which is?
Um, it's in, uh, it's, it's in early April. April ninth, is it?
First meeting isn't until after that.
Do you have, do you have a feel for how many people come from outside the Bennington community to take over some of these apartments?
Yeah, you know, I hear that a lot and I don't think they end up in our, our apartments. Um, for the North Branch Street and Benmont Avenue, I, I had the, the staff go through and do a, do a, a run of how many applications had addresses from outside and it was very, very few. Um, some applied but didn't qualify. Um, two did, um, did succeed in getting apartments out of those twenty-four, but they have family connections here. Um, they're, they're two households and between them there are, there are five different jobs.
I don't see that as a bad thing anyway. I'd like to see people live in, or working elsewhere and then coming to Bennington. That's exactly what we want because then we get dollars from other towns and they start spending it here, so that's, I don't see that as necessarily a bad thing, but...
I just wanna, I wanna note one thing, I'm pretty sure that if you look in the town plan, there was a projected need for housing, both, um, residential and rental included that, in that over the next, I think it was twenty or thirty years.
So here's what you're facing, board, your next meeting is the fourteenth of April. John, that's gonna be too late for the town to take action for you to get...
Be too late for the town to take action?
Yeah, so there's your, here's the thing, so I'll leave the board with their...
What is the action that's requested, John?
Uh, to authorize the town of Bennington to be the applicant, uh, so that we can be the sub-applicant.
I would move that.
And I'll second.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, how does this community development block grant work? Does it have to go towards housing projects or couldn't it go towards something else?
Has to go for this project that's on here, right here, this is...
No, well, right now, but I'm just saying this grant in general.
Yeah, block grant, block grant funds can be used for housing, they can be used for job creation, they can be used for, and Mike, I'm gonna look back to you, but they can be used for a host of reasons as long as it's, it's improving the community. In this particular case, we don't have any other, uh, applications at this point pending.
Would it go towards like, um, different streets that we're trying to revitalize, not necessarily towards housing, but increasing or improving the, the standard of living on those streets?
You'd have to put together a pretty, pretty varied proposal in order to be able to prove that. You have to be able to prove, prove your project, it can't just be, we'll take the money and then we'll spend it in some way to better the community. There has to be a project specific that they're looking for.
Okay, any...
I would just say, you know, if we're gonna be asked to approve things like this in the future, that, that are time-sensitive, that we should get them a little bit more in advance. Um, you know, just, there's questions that come up and, um, I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad thing, but I have questions that I, that I would need answered before I could support them.
I would, uh, if this motion were granted, I would also make a further, further motion that those questions that you have that are real, if not for this project, but across the spectrum, are dealt with and that we share those with the manager's office so we can get responses and talk about those.
Okay.
Because I think they're real.
Just before we vote, I know at least four or five people that have looked at, that work here, have decent jobs, have looked at investing in the town, whether it be buying houses or actually buying, uh, investment properties where they can get rentals going. And I'll tell you right now, I'm, I'm one of them. Um, and looking at this right now, I would consider selling my building and my investment in the town to rent for six-hundred dollars because of how small it is in comparison to the, the properties that are out there in general. I mean, these are, there are, there's potential for people that have certain jobs that might want to move into Bennington and invest, which really solidifies them. It's, it's, face the facts, it's harder to move if you own a, own a piece of property instead of rent it. And, uh, I don't know, I would have, I might question my decision on owning a property that would cost me more, um, but still be advantageous when you look at standard rents compared to subsidized rents. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, any other discussion? I have a motion and a second, all in favor. That's one, two, three, four, five, four, all opposed, two. Motion passes, carries.
And I would...
Stuart, can we get the information, uh, that's been asked, just so the board members understand?
Yeah, focused mostly on occupancy rates and rental housing current, in the current system. Is that what was, that was one of the questions?
Yeah, there was a couple of those things I was interested in. And it's, you know, Justin makes a good point, I'm fairly familiar with the organization and I have pretty good familiarity with the property and whatnot, um, but if I were not, it would, I would have a hard time making a decision on such a short notice, so I would, I would like to see if we could get more information upfront when it's...
I look forward to helping you answer those questions. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dan, you wanna come up and comment on this?
I just wanted to let everybody know, um, I need to kind of reach out to Christian with the town, kind of like to work on it. Um, we're probably gonna have...
Is this from the regional commission standpoint now or, or...
Well, this is from the town and the regional commission, just a point of information.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, we should have a pretty comprehensive housing study with all that information you folks are looking for. How long, like two months?
Uh, if that, to, probably like five, eight.
So, I mean, we'll get together the interim information you've asked for, but you're gonna have a lot of information to look at, particularly on that housing study, which will help inform us as far as, um, going forward in the future and it's gonna have a lot of, um, recommendations, specific actions. We're gonna really look to be proactive and try to deal with some of the issues that we have in the housing area, in particular renovation of blighted property, so all that's coming, I just wanna make sure.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, next item on the agenda is the rescue pumper truck financing documents. Stuart?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, the board has already approved the purchase of this vehicle and when we talked about the purchase, we were, uh, working, uh, on a competitive basis with two, uh, lease-purchase companies. Uh, this company here that I am presenting to you tonight, uh, has the best interest rate for the, for the fifteen-year purchase. Uh, what I have, I need from you folks is an agreement to adopt the resolution authorizing the manager to sign where indicated and also attesting and certified by, by the chair and vice chair of the board. I have provided to you the payment schedule, which indicates that the payments on an annual basis are below the fifty thousand. Uh, I think the other was about fifty-four, fifty-five thousand. Uh, those are annual payments and, uh, I also attached Rob's opinion. Uh, he was, when I wrote my memorandum to you, he was looking at the documents, which are relatively substantial, it's about a ten-page agreement. Uh, the print is about what you see here, uh, but he has issued an opinion, uh, that is in, uh, basically says that the agreement is something that the town can sign and that, uh, if we wish to move forward, uh, we need to have these documents back to the company by March thirty-first. Um, we actually got an extension from them because the, the opinion letter was so extensive that I wanted to give Rob sufficient time to make sure he got through it. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution, I don't think we need to read it and authorize, uh, the manager to sign it and be attested and certified as noted.
Okay, I would like a motion, if we're willing to do this, to, uh, not read it and to pass or adopt a resolution.
I'll move, I'll waive the reading.
Okay?
Second, Matt.
Yeah, a motion and a second, any discussion on it? And I think it's good work, Stuart, for the staff to, to drop that, about what, four thousand, almost five thousand dollars annual payment. Okay, all in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. And Joe and Sharon, I'll get your signatures at the end of the meeting. Yep, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, now we have another proclamation for National Library Week and, uh, I'm gonna let Sharon, uh, vice chair, read this one.
Uh, Town of Bennington proclamation, National Library Week two thousand and fourteen. Whereas libraries help lives change in their communities, campuses and schools, where, whereas librarians work to meet changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside the library walls. Whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and the local, and address local issues. Whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to downloadable contents like ebooks. Whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, twenty-four-seven homework help and financial planning services to teens applying for student loans, to older adults planning their retirement. Whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the need, needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore we, the Bennington Select Board, do pro, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April thirteenth to nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. We encourage all residents to visit the library this week and take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at your library. Lives change at your library. Data at Bennington.
Have a motion to approve the proclamation, accept the proclamation? Okay, to a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the proclamation? All in favor? And that's unanimous. Okay, liquor licenses, Stuart?
I'm sorry about that.
Uh, I'm sorry, Joe. Next item is liquor licenses.
Uh, we skipped over the water bond discussion, are you planning to bring that back?
Uh, oh, we did, okay. I got excited about the five thousand dollars a year savings there. Water bond discussion.
Uh, basically, uh, I, I presented to you an email from Eric Law, who is with the, uh, Water Resources Division regarding the drinking water revolving fund. Uh, if we are to benefit by the, uh, low-interest monies, uh, and, uh, with the opportunity to provide, uh, a project that will allow Southern Vermont College to tie into our water system, uh, we are required to do several things. The first is execute the loan closing documents for the engineering expense, which we tabled, uh, from a meeting, several meetings ago, uh, because we weren't sure of the bond vote itself, uh, but we don't need the vote in order to get those monies funded through the revolving loan program, which means we don't start paying for them until such time as we have a project. Uh, they, they want to assign this project continuing status on the two thousand and fourteen project priority list. Uh, we would then be required to submit a project priority list application, that's a relatively informal process because we would already be on the list. And continuing status, as he explains, is, uh, important because without it, the project would be reranked or SVC would be forced to go forward without us and we would lose the opportunity for low-interest loans and a partner in the project. Uh, we did manage to get the state to allow us to re-vote, uh, sometime in November, should the board decide to do so. I was talking with the town clerk at the time about using the midterm elections as a possible opportunity. Uh, he and I in the end agreed that that's probably more confusing than beneficial. Uh, and we wouldn't wanna tie it to the primary, which is coming up in early August, because that's two ballots, you have to declare your party, uh, which would just add to the confusion. Uh, so the clerk is of the opinion that if we wish to go forward, uh, we should do it as a standalone vote, uh, the bond issue on its own. Uh, if that is the case and you decide to do so, uh, we would provide you with, uh, dates that would work. Uh, obviously we wouldn't wanna be too close to the primary, uh, so we might be looking at a date in July, uh, but at any rate, uh, the idea would be that we would have in place, uh, a decision by the board to re-vote, uh, by nine-thirty, two thousand and fourteen, and that would maintain our position on the project priority list, uh, even if the vote occurs after that date, so.
So the action we need to do tonight is to close or to revert the action we did when we, on the, on the engineering study?
Uh, it would require a, a decision by the board tonight to re-vote the project, uh, before, uh, or up until the, the midterm elections. Uh, that's the only thing we need from you tonight. I would then come back to you with the engine, the application for loan opportunity for the additional engineering expense and I would come back to you with, uh, suggested dates for that vote that would give us the subs, uh, the necessary warning time, I think it's thirty days, but we have to post the warning three consecutive weeks, same day each week in, in the paper, we'd have to hold at least two public hearings. Uh, so we've got some timelines to figure out, should the board decide to go forward, uh, and all I'm really looking for from you tonight is, will, will you re, want to re-vote this, uh, before, uh, December thirty-first, say, of two thousand and fourteen? Uh, if we wait beyond that point, SVC would most likely be forced to go on its own, it would find its own solution, use the, uh, inexpensive monies and then we would be at some point in the future looking to go back to the voters, uh, to somehow build a tank and, and access it, uh, either on the lands of the Southern Vermont College or elsewhere depending on the elevation and the needs of the system.
So this is just leaving the door open until December thirty-first for us to make a decision?
Uh, it, it leaves the door open for us to propose a, a vote. Uh, we have to do some things by September thirtieth in order to maintain our position, which includes, uh, filing that loan documents that, that allow the engineering costs to be reimbursed to us. We've actually already spent the money, they would be reimbursed to us and our payment schedule would then be pushed back until the time of the, the contract, uh, is required to be paid.
Okay.
Uh, the three hundred thousand dollars savings, is that during, is that in a portion that was, uh, a town portion, split portion?
It's, it's, it's split. Everybody benefits by it. Uh, basically, when we designed the original project, the idea was to do the, uh, ultimate design, which took it up through the, the meadow, uh, from Monument Avenue, to a point just north of the dormitories, or downhill from the dormitories and the gymnasium, and then basically run along the roadway, all the way up to the tank. That gives us access, from a point of view, of repairs and servicing of the water mains that are beneath the surface. The new design actually takes us a little bit crosslots between the two dormitories. Uh, there is a pond there. We would skirt the pond, and then cut crosslots up, uh, just below the, the current, the mansion property, and up to the tank. So it, instead of winding up the roadway, we're, we're really going diagonally across lots. It creates some issues for us for maintenance, but new construction, water main construction, more than likely we won't be worrying about any maintenance for that for at least a decade beyond its construction. So we save money by reducing the length of pipe.
Any other board members? Jim, Greg?
Um, yeah, I'd, I'd be in favor of, of pursuing this, and I think, you know, the, the, um, goal of this all along is to put something together that's gonna save the town, the town ratepayers money. Uh, I think this project does that. There were some definite concerns on just the process and, and, uh, and it being fair and whatnot, so, and how it was gonna be repaid. And I'm, and I'm sensitive to, you know, voting on something when we don't know how it's gonna be repaid. There's a lot of people that aren't gonna be comfortable with that. So I think this gives us some time to pursue some of those discussions, uh, get, get a package together that the voters could be more comfortable with, and, uh, and go on and take advantage of the, the, um, low-interest rates that are available, and, and save some money in the long run. So I, I would be in favor of that.
This is not asking for any expenditures, correct? We're simply leaving the door open in a different manner?
That's correct.
Not even this plan. It's just that we will vote on it again at some point?
Yes. And, and I, I should note, in, in answer to Reg's points, uh, Terry Morse is, um, working on a five-year projection for our budget, uh, for the water fund budget, attempting to show how we can keep the budget increases to a minimum, perhaps cost of living, uh, by downsizing some of the projects, ongoing projects that we've been doing and committing those funds to bond payments. He's also working with Melissa, so that we actually begin to, uh, budget in the depreciation for the main project, so that it's in place when the project comes online, rather than seeing a big jump after the fact. Uh, so those are our goals, and we'll come back to you with that information, uh, and, and a timeline that we think will work, and, uh, we'll see what the voters think. I, I, there are opportunities here, uh, to show the voters how we can do this, uh, and mitigate increases in, 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 uh, in the water fund budgets that we hadn't really prepared for before.
And I, I will say, that's exactly correct. Because of all the issues, since I've been on this board, I've had voters come up who voted against it, did not understand what they were voting against, and said, if I'd known there was gonna be savings to the Town of Bennington water rates in general, I would've voted for it. So I think the education piece has gotta get out there. Uh, it's not, it's not the college. A lot of people thought it was the college was the only one gonna benefit from this thing. And I don't know why that was, but more people say, I'm not gonna do it for the college. You know, they're, they're getting tuition up there. Well, that, they didn't, they didn't see the, the benefit to us, and they didn't catch the point that we're mandated, we're gonna have to do it sooner or later. And, uh, um, so I think you need to start the education piece early on before you, you do anything else on this.
To that point, Stu, before we do bring this in front of the voters, again, there's one big thing that was missing for me, and maybe for other voters, but I didn't see, uh, I kept hearing mandate, I kept hearing mandate, but there was no background of what that mandate actually was. I didn't know if it was three houses that needed fixing, or if it was an entire community that needed fixing. I saw the project, and I saw the impact of it, which, massive impact. It was gonna be, improve the quality for a number of houses, but I didn't know what that mandate actually said, and how many houses we had to affect. Um, the second thing that I think a lot of people were tied up with, um, was that it was kind of a threat. It was, vote for it now, or it's gonna be more expensive later. And, uh, I, I kind of, if I think about it in terms of, my car was junky, and I needed to get a new car, Justin came up to me.
It's always gotta be me.
It's always gotta be you. [laughing] Justin came up to me and said, John, you know, the state's gonna have to take your truck off the road, and you have to buy a brand-new Subaru. And I'm like, well, do I have to buy a brand-new Subaru? And you have to buy a brand-new Subaru, but he didn't even give me the option of a, a used vehicle.
Very persuasive.
He just said, buy a brand-new car, that's all you can do. And it's been voted down. We found three hundred thousand dollars. I don't know why that was on the table before. What I'm looking for is our options. What's our used vehicle? What's our, you know, what's our luxury vehicle? What are our different options here? And then bring that to the town during that meeting, so people can see that this is why we chose this. And I, personally, I voted this down, or I voted with the town voting this down, and my reason behind it was not because it was not a, a bad project, because I just wasn't sure whether or not it was a good project, and there was more information that was, uh, necessary before I could make a positive vote. So those are the two main things that I'd like to see.
Appreciate that, John. That'd be helpful.
One other quick question. You mentioned the savings and going across SVC property as opposed to the rural line with the, with the lines of the piping, but if that's piping that's on their property for their facility, that's not something we would ever have to worry about.
Actually, uh, no, because the, the, the main, the mains that serve the tank will be maintained by the municipality. They'll be our water lines. We will control connections to those lines, so should the college expand, it will have to come back to us, and, and essentially-
But any lines that run from that main to their facility?
Are theirs.
Their property.
That's right. Their service lines. From the shut-off to the buildings is all theirs.
The mistake we made, we, been the town, the select board made, in my opinion, was we did not hold a public hearing on this whole project. Uh, we should have, as we did with the fluoride issue in the water, as we did with the airport extension, where we get the community here and let them debate the issues and hear the issues. And I suggest that we probably wanna go do that this time. Uh, get the president of the university down here to explain her side, get somebody from the state water quality down here to tell them, hey, guys, uh, this is not a threat, Bennington. Here's what's gonna happen to you. And, uh, I just think we need to, to think about doing that before you, you do the vote. Start, and select board members.
Yeah, and we did, we did provide to you the, the, the first two pages of our operating permit, which talk about the deadlines for these things, and what the possible actions are, and is basically denying new, new connections and fines. I mean, that's basically what the state will do. They won't shut the water system down.
Okay, so, Tom?
Just one, uh, question. Relative to the water rates, I know the, we've been playing catch-up because of the lack of depreciation within the, the rate scheduling. How, where do we level off? Is it next year, where the depreciation?
I think you'll see a, a budget, when we come to you in, in May, with the, both the water and sewer budgets this year, you're gonna see a, a water budget that's gonna be practically level-funded. So, uh, I, I think we've, we've, we've met the depreciation issue. Of course, every time we approve the system, depreciation increases, uh, but we're now, uh, basically two phases from completion of Northside Drive project. One's already budgeted for. You're gonna see the next one in this one, in this coming budget. Uh, then we have the water line that goes across the Benmont Avenue Bridge. That is a project that is substantially less than the last phase of, uh, Northside Drive. And then theoretically, if this project goes forward, we would be looking at two years out, three years out from now, beginning to pay this down. And those payments are in the range of, of whatever it was, a hundred and eighty thousand a year, which is less than the four hundred thousand a year we've been committing to projects. So, we think we can do it. Um, we, we weren't prepared to show that, uh, and make that commitment, but that became a question, that became an issue. How do we know? You're not gonna continue to raise rates on us. We're gonna show that we think we can do that.
Okay. So what we need is a motion from the board that you either do?
I think just by consensus, Joe, is fine.
Okay. Do we have consensus, then, at some point in time, when Stuart comes back to you, you'll approve the, the vote?
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine.
You have consensus?
Very good.
Okay. Uh, manager's report.
No, liquor licenses.
Liquor license.
Why?
You're just all over the place tonight.
Yeah.
Only got one meeting.
Yes.
Jesus.
Okay.
I, I will circulate the renewal licenses for your signatures, and there is attached one, uh, new license, um, with the signature pages is marked. Uh, this is for the, um, Shell Station at the corner of South and Elm Street. That is coming under new ownership, and they are applying for a license, hope to be open by May.
So now the manager's report.
Now the manager's report. Um, we talked a little bit, uh, at the last meeting about, um, the revolving loan fund and, and some of the monies that, uh, are available, and what kind of delinquencies we had. Um, and this information comes from Mike Harrington, basically, but we have two business loan portfolios. One is the Bennington Revolving Loan Program. The other is the Micro Loan Program. Uh, at the present time, we only have three delinquencies of no more than three months in the Bennington Revolving Loan Program, and there are some, uh, thirty, thirty-two loans outstanding, twenty-four in the burlap, eight in the micro loan. Uh, we have put a hold on the Micro Loan Program because it was capped at ten thousand dollars, and we're, we're taking a look at that, probably gonna come back to you with a, a, a program that will allow that money to be used, uh, perhaps with a, a higher cap on it, um, in order to get it into, into businesses that are a little more substantial than what we were focusing on with the Micro Loan Program. Uh, the combined total of funds available is four hundred and, call it four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um, the Micro Loan Program has available a hundred and thirty thousand, or a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, so, uh, we've got funds available. We have funds out there in the community. Uh, there was, at one time, a thought that we might release the delinquent list, but, uh, I would prefer not to do that unless the board directed me to do so. It is a matter of public record. Um, but I don't think it's our tent here to embarrass those who are struggling a little bit at the present time, as long as they're staying and coming current when we ask them to.
I've asked Stuart to bring this up tonight. It's part of this discussion we've been having about the recruiting versus retention. I've been going around. Uh, we've got about seven of these loans out to our small businesses. I will tell you, if you take the time and walk around to our small businesses, you're gonna find out, most of them are cash and credit strapped. They cannot get credit from a bank. They can't get a line of credit like they did ten years ago. I asked our banker here the other day, is it tougher now? She said, absolutely. It's much tougher for these folks. You're gonna find, if we don't take some action, you're gonna see some of these folks go off the rolls totally. We're gonna lose everything we've got. A recommendation I have, there's not much we can do other than lend it, but we can restructure these loans for these people that may be, that are delinquent, and I think there's only three of them, but there's some other ones that are struggling to make that payment, so they don't become delinquent. And I was considering, uh, maybe allowing them to restructure that, where they have a grace period of ninety days before they start paying again, till they get in the busy season again, till we start seeing tourists coming in. Uh, folks, they're tough out there. And that's not all they're facing. They're facing, I got something from the legislature today. Legislature's gonna be kind to us, to him, houses, John. You're gonna get a four percent, a four percent jack in, uh, in your property tax. The small businesses are gonna get eight percent jack in your income tax, in your, in your property tax. Oh, by the way, there's two bills up there right now that's gonna pass. Uh, at least one of them, one of them's in the House, uh, to increase the minimum wage to twelve dollars, fifty cents an hour. The other one's gonna set it for twelve dollars an hour. There's another bill up there that's gonna mandate all small businesses, uh, put a six-day, um, sick leave in a policy in their thing. And is Mike still here? Mike, can we come up here a minute, please? I'm gonna ask Mike to tell you, if he doesn't mind. He was at the legislative breakfast the other morning, where some of our businesses, that I don't consider small, I consider them ongoing businesses. Uh, Pembroke Real Estate, or, um, Landscape, uh, TAM Waste Management, and, uh, what was the other one? Uh, Bennington Station.
Yeah.
If you will, relay what those owners of those businesses say what these bills will do to their businesses that employ a lot of people.
Conversation was around two, um, bills that were proposed at the state around mandatory sick leave, which you've probably heard a lot about, as well as the minimum wage increase. Uh, and I, they, they pose a significant burden for our small business owners. Um, as we look at both of those areas, uh, one of them was, uh, Jim Secor, uh, talking about Bennington Station, uh, and the fact that if he had to move to a mandatory sick pay, uh, or increase, uh, of the minimum wage, he would probably not be able to survive, uh, you know, for the foreseeable future, just because of the, the financial burden it would put on his business. Um, we do have a, as Stu mentioned, a handful of loans that, um, where I think there are businesses that are certainly, um, moving along, and they continue to operate, but it comes down to a decision about whether or not they pay the electricity, or whether they pay, uh, the, the loan. And, um, obviously, in their mind, to keep the lights on and, and the stoves working, and, and whatever else they have going on, that's, that's the priority, to keep the doors open.
You're gonna see some of them mortgage their own homes and everything else to keep their businesses alive on Main Street. And, uh, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, consider, you know, what's going on, what's facing these small businesses, and, and if the, the board can authorize, uh, Stuart and, and Mike to, if, if, uh, somebody has one of those loans out there, could use a few months, uh, call it a holiday, uh, before they start picking up again, until they get their feet on the ground to pay these other things, but we will allow them to do so. Restructure the loan, basically.
And basically, um, we can do that. Uh, we would offer that, obviously, to, to the businesses out there that are struggling. Um, we, we don't have a huge delinquency, but that doesn't mean that people aren't struggling to make their payments. And any restructuring of the loan or deferral of payments, we would have to bring that back to you on a business-by-business basis. Um, but I, I think the board has been very responsible in the past, uh, where companies have come to us and asked for a deferral of payments for a period of time until something changes for them. Uh, so we would work with those businesses to, to find, uh, a solution that we can then present to you, and you folks would have an opportunity to say yea or nay.
Yeah. The one that really struck me at that meeting, and I'll just bring it up, was, was Trevor Mance. I mean, I don't consider him a Casella, okay? It's gonna cost him over a hundred thousand dollars a year to, if, if this goes into effect. That's a lot of money for a guy struggling to start a business here, and has been very successful, and upgrading his equipment and everything else. And, and Ronnie Pembroke basically said, he's got a policy, takes care of six. His policy is, if you don't take it during the year, I'm gonna pay you for six days at the end of the year. What he's afraid of, the guys are gonna look at this as another week's vacation, they're gonna take it early on. Then the guys that get paid at the end of the year say, to hell with that. I want, you know, I want the extra week off, and we'll get paid anyway, so why come in when I need you during the summertime, cut grass and stuff?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of things that are facing our young, uh, not just young, our small businesses out there, that I think we gotta be aware of. And, uh, you know, we're not talking about the international companies. We're talking about our friends and neighbors here that are trying to make Bennington a, a great place for us all, so.
Has, has anybody from the town gotten in contact with our, um, delegation from my player to, to express these concerns, and were they at the meeting?
I've spoken to them, actually.
Everybody was there but Senator Sears, um, and Senator Hartwell, but he had his wife read a statement for him. He's, he's behind, he understands some of this stuff. According to, if I remember what Wendy Red, she, Bob understands what's going on down here. Uh, Dick was on the phone, or was he not on the phone?
He was not.
No, he was on the phone. Uh, but every, all our other representatives were here from the county, uh, from the lower part of the county.
And the, the sick leave bill doesn't add anything if you already have a policy. It's a minimum for people that have no policy. And one of the things they're finding is that, and, and the DLCT backs this up, is that in the, well into the ninety percent of employers already have policies that are, that are above and beyond what that is. So I don't know if we're gonna see action on that, because they're finding that it's, and most people are in compliance with that. The, the minimum wage thing, I encourage people to get in touch with their legislators, because, um, I've heard talk of everything from, you know, ten dollars an hour to fifteen dollars an hour. And I think it's important for them to know what a realistic number is. You know, I mean, there's, there have to be entry-level jobs. There have to be jobs where an employer can afford to take a risk on somebody, um, somebody with no training. But on the other hand, if there's no bottom end, you know, and no recession has ever ended without somebody putting a bottom rung on the ladder.
Right now, both those bills are in committee. They're not on the floor being voted on. The Senate bill is twelve dollars an hour, as originated, and twelve fifty in the House bill.
And the governor's recommended ten-ten.
Yeah, the governor's recommended less.
Yeah, 'cause it's not just twelve fifty. It's also the guy now making fifteen dollars and saying, hey.
Right. Well, the tax applications on the end of the, the back end of that also.
Federal recommendation's been, is ten-ten at their fight in four now. So I mean, I, I like to see state lines become blurred in those things and, and stuff like that.
I, I didn't bring this up for us to get involved in where it should be. I'm just saying, there's a lot of pressures, a lot of pressures on the small business community here, that we, we say they're the backbone of our economy, but we gotta really take and get out there and look at these, and talk to these folks, and, and see what the problem is.
Well, we could take a position against this, correct, in support of our local businesses?
Well, yeah, we could, if we wanted to.
I'd make a motion to do that.
Do a resolution. Uh, we'd have to act fast, because changeover is this Friday.
You wanna do something before it goes into, into place, not after. I would not be in favor.
I wouldn't either, Justin, because there's two different issues here, right? One is the, uh, mandatory, uh, sick-
We could take it separately.
But what's the purpose of that?
Oh, I think, just from kind of what we've heard from Joe and from Mike this evening, you know, that this is something that's gonna be extremely detrimental to our small businesses in this community. And if we can take a, a, a position against it, as the leaders of this community, uh, it could be beneficial and have some weight potentially on my player, so.
You know, I, I, having been a legislator, I think, if you wanna be effective this late in the game, in the second year of the biennium, a call to Mary Morrissey, Ryan Campion, Tim Corcoran, Alice Miller, Ann Moore, and Bill Botso, especially Botso being on the Commerce, Chair of the Commerce Committee, a call to them, well, those bills are in committee, would have more effect, because if we send a letter, it's gonna go to leadership, and it might eventually get down to the committees in the next week. I just think all of us calling, though, they already, they've already heard from me, folks.
Mine, too.
But, you know, give them a call, and, and I'm sure, or if you know any other legislators, uh, that you may know, give them a call, and tell them how you feel about it, and how you think it's gonna affect our, our community out here. That'd be my recommendation, but with the board's consensus, I'd say.
I would go with the phone call. I think it's more effective to talk with them directly.
Yep, maybe the best. If, if you get some examples.
Well, I'll still make the motion that we send that off to our, to our delegation from my player, the minimum that work against this as a leader of this community, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, you have a motion, a second, further discussion? Okay, all in favor? That's three. All opposed? One, two, three, four. No, promotion denied. No, motion denied. Okay, so we're into other business. Are you finished, Stuart?
I am.
All right, Tom?
Nothing further.
Greg? Uh, just, one, I wanna thank you, Joe, for your, uh, your service all these years. You're, uh, I think you're an example of someone who's given an incredible amount of services to communities, country, and, and a pleasure working with you. Um, also Kevin Lynch of North Bennington, we all know, um, from Kevin's Restaurant, is, uh, having surgery on Thursday, so I wanna send my thoughts out to his family and his friends. Uh, Kevin's a great face of the community. Uh, he and Lindy are just about everything, helping with just about anything that can go on, so they could use some help right now. Keep them in your thoughts.
John?
Yeah, I guess I, I tried to run some quick numbers, looking at the housing, uh, issue and doing that, I know in the last few years, we'll have the data in the future, but, um, looking at, say, a duplex, a two-unit apartment, you used to be able to buy each unit for about sixty thousand dollars, seventy thousand dollars. So a duplex, you could buy it for around one thirty to one forty. That was kind of the going rate where you could buy that investment property and break even initially and maybe make some money in the end. Um, running some quick numbers, I mean, insurance is gonna hit you a hundred bucks, garbage fifty bucks a month, water sewer a hundred, uh, tax two fifty, electric two hundred. If you ran some quick numbers, you would, you would notice that if we looked at, um, the six fifty a month, which was presented to us for the, the affordable, uh, income housing, six fifty, six fifty, thirteen hundred, you were, you would be left with about fifty bucks, uh, to pay for a mortgage, which obviously doesn't get you too far, it's ten thousand dollars. Now, on the high side, looking at the nine hundred a month, uh, for the two units, you'd be at eighteen hundred. That would allow you five fifty for a mortgage, which gets you around the one-ten. So all I'm saying is running those quick numbers, they're, they're just my numbers, so take them for what it is, but, um, it drops that one thirty, one forty that we used to see down to one-ten, so we have to consider that.